This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the October 18th, 2021 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have none.
If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. So moved. Is there a second?
Counselor Norman will second it.
Thank you, Counselor Norman. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any presentations tonight, Stephanie?
There are none.
Okay. We'll move right into the mayor report and always the second council meeting of the month, we choose, select a citizen of the month and I, Counselor Norman has those honors tonight, so I'll gracefully turn over to Counselor Norman, his selection.
Thank you, Mayor Hobart. Well, I picked Sean Gibson for Person of the Month, Citizen of the Month. She's been here almost 20 years. She's worked with the Salmon Festival for several years, almost as many. She's been involved with the Inter Culture Society, with them getting going. So I thought she was a very important person for this award.
Very good, Donald. Is Sean with us tonight by chance?
I'm here and I just wanted to say thank you so much. When I got Donald's phone call, it was such a bad day. So it was the highlight, actually. His call was the highlight of my day. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you for Josette putting up with me for all of these years on Salmon Festival and I just try to help out where I can. So, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and I'd like to speak a little bit on your behalf, Sean. I mean, you not only work hard at the Salmon Festival, you're one of the people, being a Realtor, that accepts a lot of new people that come to Vernonia for the first time and you're probably one of the first people they meet when they look at real estate and home share sale out here. And it's your personality and your way with people that really make a difference and it says quite a bit about Vernonia, how accepting we are and thank you for all the hard work you do in real estate and with your volunteer activities. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody. You guys have a great night and thank you so much for letting me be a part of it tonight and for the rest of the month.
Congratulations again. So we'll move right into the public hearing. Public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering the adoption of Ordinance 933, an ordinance amending the city limits by removing one territory. The procedure I would like to follow tonight is in this manner. Read the disclosure statement, hear the staff report, hear public testimony, close the hearing, City Council deliberation. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this hearing to order at 7:05 PM. My name is Rick Hobart. I am the Chairman of the City for Vernonia. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make legislative decisions about land use matters in Vernonia. The item before us tonight is a legislative item. Members of the City Council are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the members of the City Council whether they have any potential conflicts, such as family, financial or business relationship with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the council member in question believes he or she is without actual bias or whether he or she would like to step down during the case review. A copy of the rules of procedure for the hearing, the agenda for today's hearing and copies of the staff reports are available upon request. Any person with an interest in today's agenda item may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony. But please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. It is also important that you make your best case to the City Council because although all of our decisions are subject to appeal, any such appeal will be heard by the Land Use Board of Appeals and they will decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. Please make your testimony and relevant, please make sure your testimony is relevant to applicable standards for the item in question. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If I think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be part of the record. Are there any questions? That concludes the introduction. Does any City Council wish to declare any potential conflict of interest? If no, then would the staff please proceed with the summary of their written report? I'll turn it over to staff right now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is the final hearing. You've heard from me three times. It's the way the system works. On the de-annexation of Mr. Dixon's property on Miss Drive on September 7th, you heard a resolution where you initiated the process. On September 20th, you held a public hearing and you directed staff to prepare a resolution to de-annex the property. No one submitted testimony. An election won't be held because the only person getting de-annexed is Mr. Dixon and he requested the annexation. So this is the final step, which we're holding a final hearing to adopt the ordinance and this will officially de-annex Mr. Dixon's property from the city of Vernonia. So unless you have any questions, I'll keep it brief since you've heard from me several times before.
Okay, are there any questions?
No.
Okay. Now is the time for public testimony. Does any member of the public wish to speak or present testimony on this agenda item? If there's no public testimony, I will close this public hearing at 7:10 PM. Public hearing is now closed. Do any councilors have any questions of the staff or wish to present any thoughts on the agenda item?
They're shaking their head.
If not, I will thank the staff for their help and all the work they've done and I will ask the council to entertain a motion now to adopt the Ordinance 933.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. So moved. Is there a second?
Hold on, hold on.
Want me to read the motion first?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Ordinance Number 933 to remove the property from the city limits, the property defined as Mr. Dixon, as we've been discussing.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Webb, second it. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried. So we can do this in two readings if we want to tonight. Would any counselor like to hear the ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 933 by title only. Ordinance Number 933, an ordinance of the city of Vernonia, amending the city limits by removing one territory. So Rick, if you want, you can ask and they can, if counsel is in favor, they can hear another motion to adopt it with its second reading by title only.
Okay, would any, would any counsel like to make a second motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make the said motion, Mr. Mayor, that the City Council adopt Ordinance Number 933 to remove the property from the city limit. Read as title only.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. So moved and seconded. Thank you, Counselor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 933 by title only. Ordinance Number 933, an ordinance of the city of Vernonia, amending the city limits by removing one territory. So hearing both readings tonight, this ordinance will become effective in 30 days.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any councilor committee meeting reports tonight?
No.
Okay. I think I'm just about ready to get on here, believe it or not.
Conference will now be recorded.
So Rick, you'll have to hang up your phone if you have your computer on or you'll have an echo. Rick? Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can't see you.
Okay. Well, at least I'm on somewhat. I can see everyone else, so I guess that's good for now. Consent agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for September 20th, 2021. City council meeting minutes for October 4th, 2021.
Did we miss topics from the floor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Were there any topics from the floor, Stephanie?
I have heard no such request.
There were none?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Dale. Okay, so moving on to consent agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for September 20th, 2021. City council meeting minutes for October 4th, 2021. Any questions or discussions on those two meeting minutes?
I had no issues.
Me either.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept those two meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda for approval for meeting minutes for September 20th, 2021, minutes for October 4th, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Counselor Norman will second it.
Thank you, Counselor Norman. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving into unfinished business, staff report, council vacancy appointment, found on page 17.
Okay, this staff report is brought to you by me. Has everybody had a chance to read it or would you like me to read it aloud for the group?
I've read it.
I read it.
I've read it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Before we get started, I'd like to just ask or present another scenario here and I just, and I'm doing this because I like all voices to be heard and last couple of weeks, somebody came up to me and asked me, I'm not going to mention any names, asked me if they were, or told me they were interested in filling this council seat, empty seat. And I said, we kind of already had a process where we interviewed four candidates to fill the last one in June. And, but I just wanted to throw that out there that there was another person interested in stepping forward to be on the city council. And just wanted to, I realize that it might take a little longer if he decided to go through all the process again, but I just wanted to throw that out to the council for discussion, so. See what you guys think about it. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
Yeah, I would agree with that if we didn't have qualified applicants, but I think we have three fully qualified applicants. I don't know what we gain by bringing in a fourth or reopening it. We might have a bunch more. I mean, I mean, it's nice that that person stepped forward, but there was an opportunity earlier and people stepped forward earlier, so. I don't know. I don't know if we have a lot to gain by it. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I understand, Counselor Webb. Yeah. Anybody else? JR?
I personally wouldn't mind opening up for 30 days and see who wants to apply. I think it's the fair thing to do since we did it last time. Maybe 30 days after it hits the paper. I'm not sure how we did exactly last time, but we could either go through the citizen panel again or we could skip that, just go to council on the, any, or if anybody puts in new to shorten it a tad, but it doesn't matter to me if we do the exact same thing. But, so I'm good with, I'm good with opening it up.
Counselor Norman, do you have any thoughts or ideas on it?
I would follow along with JR. I don't think we want to drag it on real long. If we could, I guess, interview the one, you know, maybe put it out there and if we get more than one applicant, I could interview them and move forward a little sooner.
Yep. Stephanie, what would be the timeframe if we did open it back up and for an interview process and another 30 days or what?
So, I would have questions. First question is, would you make the people who have already gone through the process apply again or will we just use their applications for round two? Second question, and kind of a, I guess, a statement, is we didn't really, or council didn't necessarily utilize the recommendation from the citizen panel last time. So I would, if you were going to go this route, I would argue against doing that because hurt feelings, I guess. I don't want to burn out the people that we asked to do it last time because we, you know, we didn't have a lot of people knocking on our door to do it and if we, if council ignores them again, I would worry about us losing some volunteers moving forward. It's up, I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to do the interview process again. Probably looking at, I think it took us about a month and a half last time, once we got it posted, received applications, scheduled the interviews and then, so maybe two months because then you guys also have to discuss it at a later date, at a point. So probably a two-month process would be my estimate.
Yeah, that's quite a time period with the empty seat. Or we could decide with this, go ahead, JR.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we open it up for a two-week period? The people that want to apply know they want to apply most likely and then we could interview, council could interview that person within that two weeks. That would keep us down to a 30-day timeline after it hits the paper.
So, we couldn't get it in the paper for two and a half weeks if I got it to the paper today. And then also in not interviewing the other people who are interested, you're not allowing Counselor Norman to hear from them. So if we're going to interview anyone, we should interview everyone. Because otherwise you're just saying
That's fine, too.
We don't want to hear from you.
That's a good point. I forgot about Counselor Norman wasn't on the last go around there. He was on the other end of it.
So the earliest I could get it in the newspaper would be November 4th. Then two weeks from there is November 18th for applications. Then I've received them. You guys could potentially interview November 27th, although I think that's Thanksgiving weekend.
Yeah.
So more than likely you'd be looking at, if you want to follow the weekend schedule, you'd be looking at December 4th for interviews.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
It works for me.
And November 4th works for everyone?
You mean December 4th?
Oh, sorry, December 4th?
Yeah.
December 4th would be all right for me.
And JR and Donald?
I don't have anything scheduled for that day, so that'll work.
Okay, we'll do it like we did last time, morning to, all day, basically.
So, are we making the ones that applied before reapply or using their application? I'd be good with just using their previous application.
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
I would be fine with that, too.
Josette's got her hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I can't see her. Go ahead, Josette.
So I would just leave the caveat that if one of the existing people wanted to submit a new application, we should allow that. They may want to
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Their application.
Right.
I'll reach out to everyone and let them know that we're going to be opening it up, what the time period is for applications and if they want to just reuse their previous application, they can. If not, then they can submit a new one within that timeframe.
Okay. Now I lost you again.
We can still hear you.
Okay. Okay, so are we ready to move on to new business?
Can I just clarify? Are we doing the citizen panel also or are we going to skip that part?
I'm skipping it because I think we will insult them possibly, so. I already kind of did.
Well, ultimately, it's the council's decision, so I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if they're going to get their way every time on their number one or number two pick. It's, you know, so. If they want to do it, I really don't care, but it seems like we don't want to insult them or we get a different panel. They don't want to do it again. Originally, we were going to have eight or 10 people and each one of us was going to pick somebody and it just didn't work out that way, so.
We only had three applicants and then we didn't listen to them.
Yeah. What's your thought there, Counselor Norman?
I think to speed it up, we could probably, would need the citizen panel.
I'm still here. I can still hear you guys, so.
So the only thing is, is that your positions are elected by the constituents of Vernonia, not by the council of Vernonia. That's one reason we have a citizen panel, is they represent the constituents. I'm a little nervous if it looks like, I'm just going to say, what it looks like is that we're not satisfied with the three that put their names in the hat. We're going to let someone that we know apply, we're not going to have a citizen panel, you're going to pick that person, then what's really the elected process there? Just saying what probably the citizens are thinking.
Well, first thing, I don't know who's going to apply. The second thing is, we might get multiple people. Third thing is, it's in our council rules that the council appoints, period. We don't need a citizen to count. We did it last time. You said there's hurt feelings. We're trying to avoid hurt feelings.
I didn't say there were hurt feelings.
Well, somebody mentioned it. Maybe it was Stephanie.
Here.
We can always do another citizen panel if you guys want to, and then if we get three or more applicants, then we have a citizen panel. If not, then we don't. It's not any more work for me. It's up to you guys. Your deal.
What, what I didn't like about the citizen panel is the ranking one through four that we're reading about tonight. I thought they were all good candidates. I don't think it was necessary to come in and rank them one through four and say somebody's last or someone's first, so.
So-
I think, I think if council just interviewed everybody, that's fine. We can make a decision and move on. That's my, that's my opinion.
So in response to that, the citizen panel did not want to rank them. They had one selection. Council pushed them hard to put them in order, and that's when they gave you guys an order. They didn't want to. Just so that's clear and it's out there.
Well, that's not the way I remember it.
The recording's on YouTube if anybody wants to listen to it.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, Stephanie. Want to say that again?
Oh, just letting you know that the, or anybody who cares to listen to it, that the recording of the interview process is on YouTube. So anybody who wants to listen to the interview process from before is welcome to do that.
So where are we at now?
Well, I've said my piece. I think we're waiting on the mayor.
I don't have, I don't mind having another citizens panel. But.
I guess maybe they self-determine themselves, because if they were offended the first go around, they probably won't apply for the job second time, so I guess we can go for that and see if we get applicants through the citizens panel.
Yes.
And I think that, you know, there was some logic between, behind having them ranked because they give their ranking. We may have had a different ranking. We needed to know who their number two or three or whatever was, so see how it jived with ours, so. And, you know, it's kind of a process. You got to have some, some way of differentiating.
Well, I think we're going, we're going about the correct way because Councilor Norman really wasn't involved in that interview process with the other three candidates, so he'd be going in this blind tonight somewhat. So I, I think it's good to open it back up for other interest in the community also, so.
Like to point out, though, that, you know, all the interviews are recorded and and he could listen to those, so. But it looks like we're going to move forward with the new process here.
Yeah. Okay, are we done with this discussion? Guess we'll move into new business. Staff report, planning commission application, Steve Calhoun for the planning commission.
Okay, this one's also brought to by me. This is an application forwarded to you from the planning commission with a recommendation for appointment of Steve Calhoun.
Everyone read the application, know Steve quite well in the community and got a lot of experience in real estate. My personal opinion, he'd be a really good asset to the planning commission. And to the city of Vernonia. Hi, welcome, Steve. Glad you're with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, JR.
Hey, Steve. Are you still selling real estate in Vernonia?
I am.
Okay, you know, to be honest with you, we had another application that was very well-qualified, lived outside of the city, and that was a big reason that I was not thrilled with that application because of the potential conflict of interests. Could you see a possibility where that could be an issue with someone selling real estate being on the planning commission?
Not for myself, no, and I, I can say that very honestly.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Calhoun?
We did discuss that at the planning commission, and I assured everyone that I have no problem telling you when you have a conflict of interest. So I was sure that that wouldn't happen.
This is Councilor Norman.
Go ahead, Donald.
How are we setting for people outside the city limits to be on there? Is it, we got enough city limit people that somebody out of the city could be on it?
Yes, we do. This will actually put us at 50/50, and then if city council decides at a later date to appoint Teresa Ash, based on her application, then we will be three to two. So inside city limit is three, outside two.
Okay.
And I assume, Steve, you're in that five miles from city limit, or is that?
Uh, yes, I am. About three, three miles out from town, Flack Road, off Kizi.
Right. Okay, yeah, I was thinking you were within. I just wanted to double check with that.
Sure.
I'm fine with this applicant, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I get a general consensus from the entire council tonight? An acceptance for Steve Calhoun on the planning commission?
Councilor Norman doesn't have any problems.
Okay. Councilor Allen?
I don't think you really need my vote, but I'm going to abstain.
Okay, one abstention and thumbs up for me. So I have a majority that, consensus to appoint Steve Calhoun, so it's my honor to appoint Steve Calhoun to the planning commission. Congratulations, Steve. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, staff report, smoke testing report. Can be found on page 20 through 27. Josette, you're going to take this on?
Well, Ben's on, and it's his report, so I didn't know if he wanted to speak to it.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm here, council, and any, any questions you guys have about it.
Other questions? JR?
Yeah, I'm going to acknowledge that I may have a potential conflict of interest because there is some smoke coming out on city property out in front of my house, but I don't really, I've never been notified that I know of, and I've yet to be, I've asked for scoping to figure out what the issue is because there's a good chance I don't have an issue, and I'm being, it feels like I'm being left out of this whole conversation when I'd like to maybe table this and get the scope work done so we know, so I can participate in this whole process here. That's just what I, like-
Hey, JR, there is, you're free to participate. There is potentially an issue in your yard with a, with a sewer lateral. I know Stephanie has spoke to you about this before, but I don't think that we're, we're, we're taking broad strokes here and talking about this in, in a bigger, in a bigger sense, and as far as your issue is concerned, that, that will be dealt with in the future. So I don't want to, I don't want to discourage you from the, the broader discussion of this, of, of this, of the issue, okay?
Yeah, but I don't see it that way, Ben, because you can't be objective when you might be subjected to what the outcome is, so I would like the city to get the information of what's going on. In the conversation.
Can I say something? Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Josette.
So it's real, this part is inappropriate for us to be back and forth and talking about one counselor's issue. What I think Ben's trying to say, JR, is that you can be part of the discussion about what the data found, all of the things. It's when it gets down to how we're going to deal with people who we've tested or found smoke near or on their property, that's when you'd have to not participate. But all of the other parts of the report, there's nothing prohibiting you from discussing it, asking questions about what they found, why did they say this, all of that. It's just when it comes down to money and whether or not the council's going to make a determination to participate with homeowners, that's the only little piece you'd have to step back for. Because to, for a council member to ask for scoping to happen so that they can do a report, that, that's not going to be legit. So I think just step out of the financial conversation when, when and if they ever have.
We, yeah, we have a, I think Josette's correct. We, we, we have a lot to deal with here on, on a broader scope than, than just an individual level, and I, I certainly value your opinion, JR, on the, the bigger picture. So I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to discount you on the bigger picture stuff. The details are down the road, so I, I don't want to, I don't want us to get into the, the details of individual landowners right now. I just want to look at the bigger picture of what we found and possible solutions to fixing these issues.
So Josette, this is Mayor Holbert. I've got a question. What are we looking for as far as how many private citizens does this affect where they're going to have to fix their problem? Was it nine?
Well, we didn't really total it that way. We totaled it by the issue found. So you see each heading, so we have a total of 66 cleanouts that were identified as being open, 55 are potentially on private property, 11 are city-owned. So we have potentially 55 citizens' properties where the cleanout's the problem. And then if you go down to the broken ladder, laterals or wastewater lines, 19 locations were identified, seven are private people, so if you take the 55 plus seven, so now we're dealing with 62 properties. Some may be duplicates, so that number could be smaller, but seven of them were on flood buyout lots, which we can easily fix, and then one is a restroom and the four of the broken wastewater lines, like our own line. So potentially you're looking at, so what did we say, 55 and seven, so 62 plus the seven stormwater connections that were private, that's roof drains connected, so that's 69 properties. The 69 potential properties is what we're talking about, Mayor.
Okay. And we have some ARPA funding. But, and about how much of that are we able to use for this, or? I see you, you total, you figure a total of about $55,000 to fix everything?
Again, but that's, you guys need to have the bigger discussion of, yes, we have this money. Are you wanting to participate with the citizens? Do you feel like there's equity there in participating and helping citizens? And then you have to play, kind of discuss all of the scenarios, right? So one person's, it may be a $2,000 fix. Somebody may have a $7,500 fix. And are you guys interested in one lump sum that someone could access from the city? Or are you interested in a, hey, fix it, and we'll give you a stipend for coming into compliance, and then setting a date when people that aren't in compliance have a punitive element? So there's kind of that full bigger discussion of where we're going with the fixes on this. The city knows we're going to fix our own. We'd love for you to set aside ARPA money for the manholes, which we know are a city asset, helps us prove to the citizens that, hey, we found issues in our own property and we're fixing those. That might show people, we're not just requiring you to fix, but we're also doing it ourselves. So there's kind of, that just needs to be a discussion you guys have around how comfortable is each person with the city- how comfortable is each person with the city participating in financially with the fix? Or are you not? Is the majority of you not comfortable with that, and we're just gonna ask the citizens? Because rightly so, that's their responsibility. You don't have to agree to help them. Or, you know, so it's really a discussion between the four of you about what's kind of the aim, where are you going, are you for or against financially participating in some way?
And if I can inject one thing here, I mean, we've been talking about I and I issues and identifying where our issues are for several years. And the big picture is Public Works Committee and council have been asking for years to see where our issues at. And I don't want, I know we're gonna get into the weeds with the funding and things like that, but I think the important thing that I don't want council to lose sight of is that, you know, after years of talking, we have gathered all the information and presented it to council and said, hey, here's where our issues are. And the funding and the fixing is the details and kind of getting into the weeds and what, and what direction council wants to go. But I also wanna just kind of point out that staff has finally brought all of this together and found out where some of our, you know, not only city issues, but private issues, private landowner issues, and where we brought all this together is. And as far as where council wants to go, that's kind of up to council, you know? I mean, you could go from everywhere to saying, thanks, staff, for putting this together, to, okay, let's start tackling these problems. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, at this point.
Counselor Webb?
So one of the aspects they're asking us for is on the timeline of getting these corrections. I think we can answer that one pretty quickly here, I hope. We're not in the construction season right now, very good, and after this next week, we won't be, because it'll just fill up full of water. I really think the suggestion to do on the June thirtieth date, twenty-twenty-two, is would keep from causing a lot of grief on people's half, try to try to mudge something in here. We don't wanna, we don't want that, and I think even for city staff, we're gonna be pushed to be doing a lot of, because we gotta apply, we gotta apply the same ground rules to ourselves here, so we're gonna, we're gonna need some construction time, so. I would propose the deadline be June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, Counselor Webb, I tend to agree with you, you know, it's been a long time trying to discover these faults, and I don't think it'd be fair to the people that just put a ninety-day fix or else thing on it, and so I can see at least a hundred and eighty days giving them that far out. I agree with you on that June date, for sure.
The other nice thing about setting the June thirtieth date is if you do determine you're going to financially participate, it cuts it off in a fiscal year. So it motivates people, if there is some sort of stipend or participation on the city's behalf, that the work has to be done, the reimbursement has to be requested, and then we don't have to carry funds into the next year. Which Angie would like. Because it gets messy when you cross over years.
And we, you know, it's, we just kind of came up with some ideas, kind of off, well, not really off the cuff, but just some suggestions where we felt like this is a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity to help the citizens to repair their issues. Like, we, you know, we could, we could tell the citizen or the landowner who has an issue, you have to fix this dead rights. I mean, without any help from the city, and we have this opportunity to actually help the citizen, you know, if they're willing to address their, address their issues. And so I don't want, I don't want that to slip by, because despite the kind of trying times, we actually have an opportunity to help citizens correct the issue where we normally wouldn't. So I don't know how that looks from, you know, what council's perspective is, how much they wanna help people. But I really think that we ought to take this opportunity to, to help the citizens correct their, correct their issues when we can, and I think that's a really important component here. I don't know what the timeframe is gonna be, but we really need to take advantage of this money and the next. Well, what do we have till, till the end of the fiscal year here, about eight months or so? So I think we really need to take advantage of that, and I think council should kind of discuss and come up with some kind of reimbursement plan for landowners who have an issue and help them to, help them to correct these issues.
Thank you, Ben.
Do we have a consensus on the timeline here, Mr. Mayor?
Not quite yet. Counselor Norman, what do you think about the timeline for repairing?
I see the timeline that they would like to get done and everything, but I think June thirtieth is soon with some places have got real wet ground, it's gonna be August before they can do it. And with the shortage of supplies that we're having right now, I don't know that we can get it done by June thirtieth.
I mean, we're giving them eight months out to plan and execute, so it's quite a lead time here. Well, it'll take a month to notify, probably.
Yes.
We can always revisit at that time.
Go ahead, JR.
What are we notifying? Sometimes you have to know what you're notifying.
Well, and that's
The problem is, how long till the notification happens?
Well, and this is kind of what we're asking council, Counselor Allen, is what direction do you wanna go? We've provided this information, we've been, I mean, this is three years in the making to just find the problems. We've identified the problems, and I think the bigger, the bigger question is what council wants to do. I mean, you guys could just say, thanks for, thanks for getting all this information together. We don't wanna do anything, or we want to be aggressive about it. What staff is wanting to know from council is what direction do you wanna go? How aggressive do we wanna be with ourselves, with the private landowners? You know, I think we need, we need, staff needs direction from council on what, how you wanna attack this problem, if you wanna even attack it at all. And then we will come back to you with, this is how we're gonna, this is how we're gonna address the citizenry, this is how we're going to address our own problems. So that's kind of, I think that the bigger, the bigger picture is getting lost here. Staff needs direction from council on what direction they wanna go. Do they want the city to deal with our city problems and how we wanna progress with the private citizen, and then we will come back with examples of, say, the letter we're gonna send out and those kinds of things. We, you know, we need, we need big picture direction from council. That's what, that's what staff needs on this thing. That's what we need from you guys, just to be honest with you.
I think we have a general consensus for, to have staff move forward and try to not only repair our own issues, but to repair, repair the entire system and giving the landowners enough time, and I have one question for Josette. Is there a timeline on the ARP money, Josette, when we don't have access to it anymore?
December of twenty-twenty-four.
Well, we're in shape to.
So the thing I wanted to say about, at minimum, even if you're only interested in fixing our own problems, we will need to notify all the landowners that we found issues this year in twenty-twenty-one, for documentation's sake, because property switches hands. We really need to get on the record that we sent these notices to these properties and get a spreadsheet with, we've notified them once, because once it changes hands and the person that was here during smoke testing isn't here during smoke testing, the city needs to have a legitimate document that shows we notified the previous owner or the owner at the time. So the next owner isn't like, nobody told me, right? Because there's gonna be property that changes hands, and we're gonna... So at minimum, we need to notify the homeowners, the private property owners, that we've found an issue, what that issue is, and particularly where we found the issue. Just so we get that on paper. And then depending on what you guys decide, we can move forward with, but at minimum, we gotta notice people so we don't lose that institutional knowledge, so to speak.
And I don't think we need, oh, sorry, Mayor. I think that the other thing, we don't, council does not have to make a decision tonight or the next meeting, but we need to start thinking about like how, if we're going to how, how we're going to get people to comply, right? Because if we just say, oh, we want, we send a letter out and say, hey, you have this problem, we need you to fix it, but if there's no teeth behind it, if there's no incentive for them to fix their problem, and if the city isn't willing to enforce that, that's kind of a problem. And that's, that's kind of the other part that council needs to start discussing and thinking about. You don't have to make a decision tonight or the next meeting, but we really do need to start thinking about, like, what is our, what are gonna be the repercussions if people don't solve their problems? And that's kind of the other part of, that's in the staff report. We put out some ideas there. It's, they're, they're just ideas for council to think about, but we need to really, council needs to start thinking about what they're willing to enforce to get private landowners to fix these issues. And that's, that's gonna be, you know, I know that's gonna be a tough subject to to deal with, but you guys need to start thinking about that and kind of thinking how, how far you guys are willing to go to, to force private landowners to fix these, these issues, because at the end of the day, if, if they have an issue that's putting a lot of stormwater into our wastewater, you're affecting everybody who's paying stormwater rates. And every, you know, we're all paying for the electricity to run the pumps at the pump stations when the water goes overs, you know, or when it rains, so we need to, you know, you guys need to start thinking about that. It isn't an immediate, it isn't something we need to make any decision about right now, but that's the other part of it. Council needs to start thinking about what they, how far they would like to go to, I guess, get landowners to to comply and fix their issue.
Go ahead, Dale.
Oh, I just wanna put out there that we've been pushing for getting this testing done for quite some time. We've got results. I don't think council's lacking any resolve here to move forward with getting these issues corrected. We do have the blessing of having this funding that we can tap into to help resolve that, especially on the city's part. It doesn't gonna impact our budgets. So my goal here tonight was kind of to go down through the list and see where we're at, and, you know, I think this report's put together very well. They've given us some very good options. I'm ready to move forward. But there might be some issues, just like on the deadline here. We're not total consensus that June thirtieth is gonna be our date, or we put a caveat on there. If somebody has a, you know, a hardship of, you know, they can't get supplies or something, or there are just no contractors or something. You know, I'm not gonna be so hard-nosed that, I'm not gonna still try to help those people out. We want, the goal, end goal is to get compliance. Up there talking to the people that did the testing, they said as far as the cleanouts, they said, just go buy them. Hand them out like candy to the people. You know, and make sure that they get them fitted in there. I mean, like in the report, we've got some that might need some rebuild, which is gonna be a little more costly. But anyhow, I was just kind of wanting to move down through the list here tonight and just kind of give, give our staff some direction. So I don't, can we resolve the drop-dead date? Can we get a consensus there for staff?
JR?
Well, June thirtieth is just not realistic. One, the city would never get on their list, probably done by June thirtieth. Two, it doesn't stop raining in Burnonia until about July fourth. Three, that would leave June as maybe the potential month, and we're gonna, you know, people are gonna get it done in one month if they're not even a... I'm worried, I'm not worried about myself, I'm worried about people that don't even know the identified problem. Okay, there was some smoke coming up. Well, where is it a year later? I don't know. Was it out on the city property? Are they gonna expect to go out onto the roadway? You know, digging up streets and that kind of stuff? Who's gonna inspect it? Who's gonna work with them to make sure it's done? The contractor might not know what needs to be done. I mean, I'm worried about the exact information of what they need to fix. Is it gonna be scoped? Is it gonna be drawn up? What they use, what they do, because people aren't gonna know what to do, even if you say cap. Is it gonna be drawn up? What they use, what they do? Cause people aren't gonna know what to do. Even if you say cap it off, they're gonna have questions. A lot of it's not just cap it off. I mean, it could be a replacement of, uh, an old sewer line that could be eight feet deep. Then you get into trenching and safety and the mud is caving in. So to me, when I heard the June 30th, I didn't find that realistic, to be honest with you. For, for, for the average person, you know, it's gonna have to, uh, probably go hire a contractor and tear up their yard mud and all that, so.
Was it more realistic September 30th?
Well, you know, a lot of the issues can be solved. Sure. The small little caps clean out, that's simple. But I think if you start digging up streets and yards, I don't know if that's realistic going into winter here and say you're gonna be done in the month of June, cause that's the only month you probably have a shot at it.
So what about October 15th, 2022?
Yeah, that's a lot more realistic. You have all summer long to, in the dry season, to deal with uh, an issue that could be eight feet down.
And then it's done before, they're not digging during flood season.
Sorry, I couldn't, couldn't quite hear that.
During flood season.
Right, right, right. So that was just my initial thought when I heard the June 30th, not that a lot of them couldn't be solved.
Well, here, here's, here's an idea, JR. Like, we need to notify people. We have to make an initial notification to say, here's the problem, but we can't just leave them hanging. And like I, like is stated in the, in the staff report, although cleanouts and laterals are private, if, if we're gonna say, hey, you have a problem, we, we, we kinda have to offer some kind of support in identifying what the problem is and stuff. Um, and perhaps if somehow they get back to the city and say, okay, we're looking at this and evaluating it to give them, to give them some, some leeway. Um, and, and that's kind of the tricky part. As, as I noted in there, in, in the, in the staff report, legally, we're not allowed to touch their system. Um, their, their laterals or cleanouts, um, but we need, we need to come up with, with, that's kind of the tricky part. We gotta come up with some kind of way to help them to say, hey, this is where your problem is. And, and how do we help them to evaluate? You know, because like you said, a lot of these, a lot of these cleanouts just need a $3.50 PVC cap pulled in. And other ones, they're, they're gonna end up where they have a an entire lateral that was installed in 1950 that needs replaced. And that's kind of the tricky thing is how do we, you know, how do we, how do we help person the most we can, um, to re, to resolve these issues? And I, I actually had called a couple other jurisdictions about how they deal with these issues and the answers that I got back is it's not simple. And they didn't really have particularly good answers either. So, um, we're, we're we're, we're kind of, it, it's, it's a tough situation. Every single one of these properties is gonna have different qualities to it as far as what it needs to do to be fixed. And you know, part of, I think part of our job and part of what I put in is suggestions was trying to come up with a balance to help people out as much as possible. But it's, it's really hard to tell what some of these are gonna take, you know, and we, we're gonna, we're gonna find some that their entire, their entire sewer lateral that was installed in 1956 is needs to be upgraded and is a, is a major impact on our INI. I, there is no easy answers, I guess.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it's cast iron and, you know, the old cast iron sewer line. And just say the first joint or something's broke or whatever out by the edge of the property. And then they run a piece of ABS or PVC or plastic to it. Then what? Are we gonna come out and re-smoke test and then say, no, it's, you know, you gotta replace all the way to your toilet or where does it stop? I mean, how do you know when the issue is fixed?
Well, those are, yeah, those are the tricky, those are the tricky questions. I've, and believe me, I've been thinking about a lot of, a lot of these different scenarios and it's, it's, you know, it, it's not, it's, it's not an easy problem to solve. Um, but the end result in, 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 well, at least like the city solving its problems, that's easy. Um, and the citizens doing it, the end result is we're just trying to alleviate the stress on our pump stations and on the sewer plant. You know, and o- other areas where we, we have issues like up on Weed Avenue where the, the sewer starts spewing out in, in heavy rains. Um, so it, it isn't, it, it isn't an easy, it isn't easy by, by any means to fix, but you know, we gotta start doing something, I, I think.
Sounds like to me, this takes another workshop on rather than tonight, but if, if we could put out October 15th, like Josette said, that'd buy us some time. Go ahead, notify the, the the citizens if they have a problem, um, and, uh, I don't, I don't know. Is there any way to identify whether they just need a cap? Or a whole new lateral or, uh, Ben or?
I, you know.
Kinda dig it down with a shovel to find out?
Well, some of those are gonna be, that's, that's tricky, um, uh, Mayor Hobart. Um, and, and like I said in the report, we legally can't touch their, their sewer lateral. And I don't wanna put extra pressure on public work staff, but I think maybe the best thing to do is that council instruct staff to, to, um, notify the citizen, that those citizens and landowners that they have an issue and that the city will be getting back to them. And I think Josette might have some, some more insight on that here. Josette?
Go ahead, Josette.
So can you guys, is there consensus that October 15th, 2022 would be the date in the notification letter for compliance?
I'm up here.
All of these discussions about seven properties, that's it. The lateral problem is on seven properties. That's it. So we're really kind of beating a dead horse. There's only seven instances where we're gonna have these potential things. And I think we get more information by kind of delving into how many areas of smoke showed up on that lateral? How old is that house? How old could that lateral be? We could do some investigating on these seven properties and then come back to you guys with a proposal for whether or not we participate financially with the homeowner. For the most part, cleanouts, I think you guys just pick an amount of money you're willing. We notify the homeowner. We tell them this is the size cleanout. You can come pick one up at City Hall. We get the most regular sizes that we've seen out in the field. We get a case of each and we just hand them out like Dale said, like candy and get all those things there. Those people can easily do that by the 15th of October in 2022. And the bigger discussion for these more detailed laterals, we push off. Like in a work session, we come back to you with what we know about the age, potential age and condition, breakage, that kind of thing. Just specifically to those ones that may have a big monetary figure. Cause I think without knowing all that data, we're kind of just spinning our wheels trying to think of all the options that could be out there and plan for that. And really, we can figure out pretty close to what the problems are on those properties. How deep is the manhole? We'll know where their lateral comes into it. So we'll know if it's gonna be a huge deep trenching problem, or if most of them are within four feet from the ground. Very few go super deep in town, um, that aren't bigger lines. So I think maybe if you guys can agree to the date and us purchasing cases of the most generic sized super caps, cleanout caps, and then we come back to you with what's left. Cause we know the city's stuff, we're gonna handle anyway. Maybe we come back to you with a price for ARPA for the lids, or you take what Ben presented here and you designate the ARPA money for the lids, the manhole lids. Um, but we could spend all day and we're really only talking about seven properties.
Yeah, I got thumbs up for October 15th, 2022. Josette, I think it's a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with the date and good with the, uh, cleanout caps. I'd like to discuss the manhole covers.
Okay.
Um, so what is the difference in the manhole covers? Is it just a number of holes in the top?
It is. They, the storm.
Can that just be, can, can, isn't there something you can just pound in there?
Well, I, I, I don't know, Dale. The, the stormwater manholes have a lot of holes in them. And the, the sewer ones tend to not have any holes and then have kinda like a little hook thing that you can put like a pry bar in to get them out. And so, and so is this kind of, th- this was kind of a surprise to me, um, but it, talking with Chris and his description of some of these, is I think that in, you know, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, when they were putting in sewer manholes, they actually set them low and put a storm lid on them with a bunch of holes so that the sewer manhole would act as a catch basin. And back then, it makes sense. We were just, everything was going to the sewer lagoons and then the overflow just went into the river. So it, I suspect that that was kind of part of, of, um, kind of the public works thing. If you, if you had a sewer manhole and there was a stormwater issue there, or you had stormwater, you just set the stormwater or the sewer manhole a little lower and you put one of these, um, lids in it to catch stormwater. And that was just kind of the procedure. And so it's kind of become apparent that we have a lot of manholes out there that need a little bit of a riser, need a proper lid and, you know, some cold patch around them because they were actually placed to collect stormwater.
Cover pick plugs.
So they're, they're designed specifically to stop surface water from entering the chamber through the pickles.
There you go. There might be the cheaper fix.
Yep.
I mean, I, I'm not beyond 10 and 260 per cover to resolve the issue, but I'm just, I'm, that just popped in my head that, you know, if it's just a whole issue, you could probably resolve that easier.
Dale, I think those are, uh, shaped for the manhole pick tool, which is not a round circle. It's an odd, it's kind of a half moon on the side of the lid. And the ones I see around here have six or eight half inch holes drilled in them all over the lids. And the one on Arkansas in front of my house used to look a river run down there. When it rains, it run, that's the lowest point. It'd just run right over the top of that and you're gonna get water in it, you know?
I bet, I bet Josette can find us plugs for those holes during the second too.
Yeah, maybe there is.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we can find a cheaper solution there.
Oh, yeah, the manhole's gonna, 500 bucks a pop or something.
They're 260 is what they're saying, so.
And, and in bulk, you can get them cheaper, but this is another company that has hole plugs for manhole lids and see that's a sewer lid. So I think we could investigate that. That's something we could bring back to you guys to talk about, you know, saving, using ARPA funds, but get a, get a little bit more info. That's what I mean about the data. As we've ordered the notification letter and a date and the cleanout lid that we can get done. And then bring you guys back, hey, we think we can solve the problem on manhole lids with this item or this process. And some of them, we probably will just have to replace the whole thing, but maybe not all.
And.
Yeah, I'd just like to give you guys direction to, to move forward on just resolving it. And if you find a cheap alternative, that's fine. Uh, we're gonna be ordering materials and with the way the supply chain is here, we need to get started now. So, uh, so I, as far as I'm concerned, I'd just like to give staff direction to keep, move forward on our manhole covers and the risers and, and, and develop that plan for that, uh, to resolve those issues.
Well, and talking to, talking to Chris at Public Works, like the, the, the risers are gonna also be a huge help because there, there, there are a few manholes that really are low and we're, we're kind of in, in, um, set to collect, uh, stormwater. The one down at, at Texas, they're right below, uh, JR's place. It's, it's almost like they, they, the asphalt even slopes down and they, they purposely put a, uh, a stormwater um, lid on there so that it would act as a catch basin. And that, you know, those risers will, will really help. Plugging, if we can find a cheaper solution to plug the holes in, in the covers that we have now, that's great. Uh, but a, a lot of those, those, uh, manholes that were purposely set low 30, 40 years ago, we, we need to get the risers on them to, to get the, uh, you know, to stop them from, from really being a, a low point for, for water to, to get in.
Where's the rest of council on moving forward? Having staff move forward on the covers and the risers?
I'm for that.
I'm for them moving forward on those.
Yeah, good.
Any other, go ahead, God, Dale.
Well, then the next item then on the list is, uh, repair grout around pipes and cracking on 13 manholes. Uh, these are, I think they specifically only looked at Corey Hill, so I'm, I'm assuming this will be an expanding project into the future, but, uh, I'd like to go ahead and direct staff to, uh, move forward on this too and, and use this funding we have available to help supplement our budget.
JR?
Question for Josette on the grouting of this. Is that something our, our engineer would make a recommendation on like a five star V100 or spec out the grout that's gonna hold up? or spec out the grout that's going to hold up?
Yeah, we're concerned before, without an engineer looking at it, is the certain materials have failed. So, yeah, we would be getting a engineer's advice on which product to use. It's been used-
You have some pretty cool products out there, but they might be forty, fifty bucks for a forty-pound bag, so it's not cheap, but it won't fall off in six months.
Right.
I know, talking with, uh, Public Works crew, they, they do have a product they've been using that very fast set. They said they had to be right on it, and it seemed, I believe they said it was being successful. I think they grouted before, and it was getting blowed out, uh, other materials, but this stuff, they said, was specifically designed for this application, so. But there again, up to staff to research it and do what's, uh, in the best interest for the city here. But I'd like to give them direction to move forward on it.
So can I go back to one thing, uh, one thing I did talk about with Chris? Is he's researching right now, but he will be bringing to council potentially a smoke testing system, which the smoke testing crew acted like the system costs an arm and a leg. But really, in researching that blower and the mineral oil and all of the stuff, it's not that expensive. And Chris would like, he's going to present it to you guys, but he was thinking it'd be beneficial for us with this money to get our own system, so that we can test if the, if the fixes have solved the problem um, in the future. And in future development will help us when we have a new house and the sewer gets inspected. You could smoke test and make sure there's no breaks in the line prior to the home being finalized and the building permit being signed off on. So there is some benefit to us having our own equipment, and he's currently doing the research to bring to you guys a system that he thinks would be beneficial for Public Works to own.
Josette, don't they water test the sewer laterals when you build a new house? They fill it full, leave it twenty-four hours, pull the plug and hook up at the main?
You know, JR, I'm kind of out on that. I mean, I know we do testing. I'm not sure exactly what the current protocol is.
You know, usually when we were hooking up houses back in the nineties here, you run, you run all the way up by the house, and then you have to run a riser, fill it all full of water, and then they cap it off right just before the main, and do a, a water test on it overnight to make sure it's not leaking, and then the plumber would sign off, and then the city showed up on that sign-off, and then they hooked tapped in. So I'm not sure smoke testing a new sewer line is really going to, uh, help you on that particular, uh, new construction.
Well, no, I'm saying it would be in addition to whatever they're doing, just to make sure that there's no breaks where water's getting in, is what I was thinking. Because if water came out, I, I was just thinking of doubling up.
Right. And, and for us to check back on, and, and to help people solve, see that they fixed it, and not, you know, partly for compliance, um, but we, we, we have a couple laterals and, um, cleanouts that we found that have multiple problems, and so it would also be helpful, it's something that the city could provide to the citizens, is, you know, if they're making a, if they're making an effort to fix their system, that we could come back and, and test it, not just for compliance, but just to find if they, if they have other issues, and, um, as, as well as, as, as just doing other, you know, we didn't get the rest, you know, we, we got a good chunk of town, but we didn't, we didn't get everything. So, you know, having our own system could have, could have different, um, benefits beyond, you know, beyond just compliance, you know, helping people out and that sort of thing.
Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah. What did it cost to, to bring that outfit out, Josette, and just ballpark? But they probably have a minimum, and it'd be really awkward for coming back and just doing these individuals that are doing repairs, or we're trying to see if they got ongoing issues, uh.
So it was thirteen thousand dollars for them to come out for the week?
And I'm sure we can buy that unit for probably a couple thousand bucks, probably.
Yeah.
Uh, I know we talked about it before, and, and I think after watching them use it, I think the crew is like, well, we could do this.
Right.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Are we ready to move on? Any other questions or discussions on any steps? Dale?
So did we get kind of all the hardware issues kind of included, Josette? Have we covered everything you were kind of wanting there?
Yeah, so you guys have approved that October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two will be the compliance deadline goal. Um, you've approved us looking into and solving the manhole lid, whether that's plugs or replacement lids. You've also approved buying the most generic type cleanouts, lids or caps for passing out to the people who have issues with cleanout. And then you've approved us moving forward with the risers and the cold patch sealing up, raising up with risers, the manhole covers that need to be raised up. Did I miss anything?
On the letters they're going to send out, Josette, when were you thinking of doing those? And if it's going to be before council decides on a financial help, are you going to note that in the letter if you send out before that they might be getting some financial help?
Yeah, so I was just going to, my proposed letter would just be an initial notification. This is your initial notification that there is a A, B, or C, whatever the issue is specific to that house. If it's, if you're at letter A, here's how to fix it, come get a cleanout cap from us and correctly install it. You know, kind of give the thing, and then if, if you're someone with an identified lateral, that third group, um, we would probably mention that council's discussing whether financial assistance will be available. We will send a follow-up letter. And just note to the homeowner that a letter should be forthcoming at the beginning of the year, whenever you guys have a date to make a decision. Does that make sense? Push it out a little bit.
Yeah, I just see some of the homeowners wanting to say, well, come over here and have a consultation with me and show me what's wrong, or tell me what's wrong, so.
Yeah, so it's only those seven that have the lateral issues. It's the seven that have the lateral issues that would get more specific letter, right?
Right, like maybe we're going to come scope it and talk to you some more about it, or whatever.
Well, or even we, they call us to set up an appointment to go over the issue we found. I mean, seven's not an unheard of thing to just have them come in, and we sit down with them and show them where we show the information was found.
Right, I'm just thinking there, you know, it could be a seventy-five or eighty-year-old single disabled person, and they're not, it's going to scare the hell out of them, so I'm just kind of wondering how you were going to word it.
I can always do a phone call ahead of the letter going out to those seven properties and say, I'm just giving you a heads up, you're going to be receiving a letter. I mean, we can do it however it works to really not stress out the citizen and just try and work with them to get it fixed.
And, and we can do that with even, even with the cleanouts, like several of the cleanouts were like a foot or so below ground level. The homeowner probably doesn't even realize that that's there, and that's, that's another thing that we can, you know, even offer those fifty-five people is uh, at least a BAP or, um, you know, them setting up an appointment for, you know, Public Works to come out and show them where it's at, and to help them identify the, the problem. I think that's, you know, that's something else that the, the city can, can offer to, to, you know, all of the people that have an, have an issue.
Right, right. I like that, because a lot of people wouldn't even know that you could just get a bell in, cut it off, extend it up, pop the cap on, done in fifteen, twenty minutes, you know?
Yeah, we can, we can, in the letter, say, please call to schedule a Public Works person to come out and chat with you, and then just have a certain day of the month, or two days a month, when that's what one of the Public Works guys is doing, is just all the appointments for that, the, the visit. And so it's not spread out, it doesn't get a mess, it's just this Thursday and this Tuesday, or this whatever day, you know? You just set it up and take appointments, and they just do that for a day, notifying homeowners and helping them out where the issue's at.
Right, and who was, was on staff that was present during the smoke testing on all this? On the seven laterals, besides Counselor Webb?
Chris Richardson was the key player. He was with the crew the entire time, taking copious notes and finding all this information out, so he's the head of this project.
So maybe he would be a good person to head that up, then?
Yeah.
And, and he did, he did, he did an amazing job, actually, of, I had, I had made maps for him, and so like a lot of these cleanouts that were kind of hidden and underground, he, he did a great job in actually locating them exactly where they are on the map, so the city can be, can be very helpful, uh, to a lot of these landowners, especially in older homes, where they didn't even know where their cleanout is. I mean, it's completely buried in a foot underground, and so yeah, Chris, Chris can be very helpful to those, to those landowners.
Go ahead, Dale.
So in the letter we send out, I would hope we would be very clear on we will offer consultation services, but what we can and cannot do for the landowner. I, I, we really need to draw that line and hold to it.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to, meeting along, um, I'd, I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Ben for all the hard work you've done, and, and your staff, Josette, in getting us to this point. Um, thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Mayor.
Go ahead, Dale.
So I'm taking it we're going to push off the decision on the money amount, if or not. We're going to, um, give a stipend for individuals that are impacted by this to a workshop in a future date here?
That would give us more time to actually research what we estimate the real issues are at the seven places.
Okay. So then staff can come back. When you're, when you've got a report, then we'll set a date.
Okay.
And then, and then council, just as a, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about October fifteenth of next year, we have a lot of time. Um, I'm sure we'll mention something in the letter that there, there could potentially be punitive repercussions for not fixing your issue. So as part of that work session, you do need to kind of discuss what you're willing to do as, as, as far as, uh, punitive, um, repercussions for individuals or landowners who, who do, who do not come into compliance. That needs to be, uh, a discussion you need to have in that work session as well.
Yep. I know my answer already.
No more permits.
Thirty-five bucks a month.
Five a month, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Josette, for your hard work on this, too. Okay, we're going to move on to letter C, Staff Report, ARPA, Direction Due Solutions, Smoke Testing Options.
So you guys see there the information that I got from the references, and also, um, the emails of the cost reduction from the sixteen hundred to twelve sixty-four per user. I did, um, talk with Nate today for Good Solution, so he's leaving your result of what you guys decide for tomorrow. Um, I'm going to call him. But he did say, so I know that you guys saw in his demonstration the potential to track employees and have their wages associated with their tracking, which then would over time tell us how much money got spent on a specific project or a specific item, because their work order would be tracked of who's doing it and the time. When I presented the original idea, we had the four users. We talked about City Hall being a collective user with all of the staff in here that would produce work orders. Then as GIS would be one user, Jeff, as the Public Works Foreman, would be his own separate admin user, and then the in-the-field Public Works would be the fourth user. The system really benefits everyone when each user is their own login. But I understood that you guys had concerns about the cost and ongoing cost of doing it annually, and so that's why we presented the four users. But there is always the option at minimum of adding and having each Public Works person be their own user. Either way, I think it's still going to be a beneficial program. So just take any questions you have about it. If there are any questions or clarifications needed on the information presented.
I don't have any questions. Go ahead, Dale.
Oh, yeah, it looks like the recommendations you got there were pretty positive. It's pretty useful. Um, yeah, I'm concerned about the user part of it, because, um, so if we only went with the four, if you were to task somebody, you could only send it to the Public Works group, right? It wouldn't be individually tasked.
Right, if we set up with the four users, all the guys in the field would share a user.
Yeah, I see. JR's just getting back on, want to make using part of this discussion, so. Uh, yeah, it, I could see where that could be a little more problematic. I mean, it isn't as useful for us if we're, if they don't have individual sign-ins, um, as far as tasking, but then also for, uh, can't hear, I'm JR. Also for them inputting data back in, into our system. Um, and if we only do the four users, is that going to create more work for our office staff to have to sort through some of that data and, and, uh?
I don't, from City Hall's perspective, it doesn't create more for City Hall. I still think City Hall could be one user producing the work order. I think from Ben's perspective, there is a data difference when they're not all separate. So it would be beneficial in gathering that data for Ben if each person's their own thing, their own login.
So...
It would be an additional thirty-seven hundred bucks a, a year. If I added, um, Austin, Jonathan, and then Mitch as Public Works or, or as Building Maintenance.
Okay, and we don't need Tim?
Well, for the time of year, I mean, we could, we could add Tim, or you could have Mitch and Tim together, but it's just really how much, you guys weren't comfortable with the sixty-four hundred, so, um...
Well, on, on that, it wasn't so much the price tag, it was just that all of a sudden they jumped on us. And that, that's what put us, that's what put myself off, was, you know, we went from four grand to what, sixty-four hundred? Uh, just in a matter of time we were discussing it.
Well, it was actually over a year, though, Dale, because I was talking to them in the twenty-two.
But even that, you know, was making me, you know, they're jacking it up that much a year. I don't wanna get into it and then you know, they just keep, you know, pretty soon it's too expensive. And then we've kind of spun our wheels, but it looks like from the other entities, they're only seeing cost adjustments for a flight, for inflation, which I guess this year might be a little, who knows where that will end up?
There's an email I got from Nate when I pressed, what's the different, what were, what was she quoting that was four thousand dollars?
Right.
And that was not the enterprise pack pricing, which is what they're seeing we wanna use. And the enterprise pricing is a per-user pricing based on the fact that your users perform multiple workflows. Which would be fine if all, if we had one water user and they only worked in water. But with our guys working in all departments, duties as amended, it could be any job today. The enterprise per-user is, works more to track all of the work that they could be doing anywhere. And that's why we changed from the initial one to the enterprise funding when they saw how much kind of overlap there was.
No, it's, I think if we're gonna do this, we need to do it right. Um, this is something that will be absorbed mainly in rates. Um, I'm, I'm not against moving forward myself. I think we need to have something and paper copies on work orders. It could all burn up the other day if the guy was an arsonist, so, you know?
Any other discussion or questions?
Uh, just listening to Dale talk there, sorry I cut out on everybody, but what was the price gonna be now? Joe said you say sixty-two hundred a year, starting out?
No, so if you, um, so the price that he quoted us for the four users is five thousand fifty-six annually. So each, um, user would cost you twelve hundred and sixty-four dollars a year.
Okay, so... Uh... It won't be long, it'll be eight thousand a year. I mean, just, we can almost guarantee that probably within four or five years, it'll be eight grand a year. Round off to a thousand customers, so it's an extra eight dollars a, a customer. Uh, well, eight dollars a year, right? So you'd be talking... Is my math right there, Mr. Webb?
Well, I mean, the ballpark we used to use on water and sewer was a buck was ten thousand. I think it's a little more than ten thousand now. Uh, so, I mean, so between the two funds, it's like fifty, fifty cents, yeah, fifty cents, uh, a month.
But it won't all be going to the sewer and water rate.
That's true.
It'll be going in streets, it'll be going in parks, it'll be going in general fund. So it's a little bit, I don't know what it would be, but it's gonna be a little different.
Probably sixty percent or better will be probably in water and sewer, I'd imagine.
I was kind of leaning on a no on this one until Ben did an excellent job with his presentation and, and explaining how he thought it would, uh, um, after talking with them and how his information would incorporate and stuff. So I could definitely see the benefit of it. It's just, um, how much is our field guy's gonna use it? So that's the only thing that makes me, you know, it's a modern age, I guess we're gonna have to get used to.
I, um, Counselor Allen, um, you know, Josette and I have had a, a few discussions about this, and there is no whether they're gonna use it or not. They are gonna use it. If we go that direction and counsel invests the money, there isn't any, you're not gonna use it. Um, that's, you know, Josette made that clear, uh, to me, and I think she would probably back me up on that. Um, as, as, as far as having everybody as a user, I know it's a little bit more money, um, and I wanted to, I, I spoke with Counselor, uh, Webb about this today. Uh, if, if we get a license for every user, we can integrate our current system, so they can, they can tie into our current login for everybody. Uh, everybody can log in individually, we can track it individually, we can send out, uh, specific work orders to specific individuals to do things. If, if we go with the lower level, staff is gonna have to manage the users, as opposed to them just tying into our current Office three sixty-five system, which they can do at no cost. Um, there, there's gonna be, there is going to be a cost penalty on the backend for me and Josette to manage those users. That is probably going to outweigh the cost of everybody just having their own license. And that's, you know, that's ju, that's just the reality of it. Um, it's kind of a stepping over a dollar to save a dime situation. We're, we're gonna have a lot more work on the backend if we just don't have, if we can't just integrate our own, uh, our current system for authentication.
But I agree with you, Ben. I've always thought that if you don't have enough guys in the field at Public Works uploading stuff, no one's gonna, no one's gonna learn how to use it, no one's gonna wanna use it, because they're saying, I don't do that, there's only one person that does it, and I don't care about it. And then that person, if they don't do it, then you know what I mean? So it's gotta be on both sides, the upload of information, the download of information, so, um, to me, if it was six thousand and, and there's more users out there to upload information of work done, where it was done, when it was done, instead of trying to wait for two weeks and then try to remember everything, uh, I see how that goes at work sometimes, so. Um, to me, uh, the couple extra thousand would almost talk me into doing it, to have more users uploading information of what they do during the day. And I think we talked about it before, you can always say, well, what are you turning in time for? There's nothing uploaded. So what did you do all week? So that's a good way to get them to start uploading. Um, but, uh,
I'm, I'm not, I'm not the HR person. Um, but like I said, based on my discussions with Josette, if they're not, and, and these, and, and the young guys, I've actually had a discussion with Chris and Austin, and they are super excited about this kind of system, and they're gonna use it. And they, they're hungry for something like this to help them be more efficient. Um, and if they're not willing to do it, I, you know, I'm not the HR person, but I, I feel that that if, if, if somebody isn't upholding their end on it, it's probably not gonna reflect very well on their, um, on their yearly work review.
I know, I don't think they won't use it. They get iPads that they can have access to instead of their own personal cell phones, which um, I think Josette talked about getting some more iPads for all the users, so. But I think, I think they'll definitely use it, especially like you say, the younger generation, they love all that flipping through phones and typing in apps and all that stuff, so. Um, yeah, I didn't have any more questions about it, except for, I just figured the cost is gonna go up probably five to seven percent a year forever.
So if, if you, if you had seven users, that would mean Mitch and Tim share a user login. That would be eighty-eight forty-eight annually. If you wanted him and Mitch to have their own user, it would be ten thousand one hundred and twelve.
For how many would be total? Everybody?
That would be eight users. There's no sense in City Hall having four users for us in here, because we can all log into the same one and, and put in work orders. That, I don't think that benefits, because we're just the admin side. But the, for Jeff, GIS, and then four public, or three Public Works, a Building Maintenance and Parks, that would be eight users total for ten thousand one hundred and twelve annually.
And Josette, you're, and Ben, you're recommending we go with the more users, for sure?
That, um, Mayor Obart, every, yes, I, everybody who's actually working in the field for management purposes and tracking purposes needs to have their own users. What Josette is saying is that in the office, a single sign-on can be doing, you know, creating work orders and doing things like that. But as far as the guys in the field, each one of the guys in the field needs to be signing on individually. One, so that we can track what individuals are doing, and two, so that we can push out work orders to individuals so that, that they get their job. The problem is if we have a single sign-on for all the, uh, Public Works guys, is that they all get a notification. And we're just creating more confusion there, is like, who is really doing, you know, if, if four guys out in the field all get a ding on their phone for this work order, then they're all spending time trying to figure out who's, who's really doing it.
It's about like what we have now. They come to, they come to City Hall and to get their, uh, job request from Josette, so just about what we have now.
Right, it's, they're, 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 they're trying to figure out who's doing what and that sort of thing, and so I, I think the most important thing is that we have enough licenses and we don't skimp on a, on a little bit of money, so that we can't have our guys focused on what they need to be doing, instead of trying to figure out, like I said, if we have one, if we have one account for all the guys in the field, they're all gonna get a ding on their phone, and then they gotta and it's meant one guy, they're trying to figure out who's really doing it. I just, I, I kinda feel like that's gonna set us back.
I think if that was gonna be the system we went with, the, how other jurisdictions have used it is that one login is the supervisor. Who then directionally designates the work. It is way more streamlined for them to each individually get, push their own work orders, but you can do it the other way, where it's going to the supervisor to designate the work. Not optimal, but it's possible.
Well, I'm...
Need to be shipped to the supervisor, so he knows who's doing it.
Well, but he could be a second one that sees it anyway, you know, in the, you can ding more than one user in a work order, so all the ones that are for underlings under Jeff, he could be deemed as well to know it came and it's in their list. That's kind of the mechanism of the function. Um, so you could do it where he gets it and designates, or he just sees they're all being sent work.
So that's, um...
Is there a chat box on this?
The what?
Is there a chat box on this program where somebody says, okay, I see this, I'll, I'll get it, and maybe the supervisor says, no, not today, we're working on someone else that just got a phone in, emergency or something? Because you were talking about somebody's designated from City Hall that so-and-so's gonna do.
Well, so that's, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the beauties of the, of the system, JR, where if, if something needs to happen and it's an emergency, say we need to go deal with so, uh, something right of way, Josette could just send that out to a specific person. Or she could put in a work order that would go to Jeff or whoever the supervisor is, and then that person could designate who's gonna go out and do it. So there's, there's multiple levels there. And that's, that's part of everybody having a kind of having their own sign-in, is that a, a lot of, a, a lot of little maintenance stuff, a task could be sent to Jeff from Josette and just say, hey, this needs to happen. Josette doesn't care who does it. She just says, this needs to happen, and then the supervisor sends it out. Or if it's a critical thing and Josette knows that Austin is on, she could send it straight to him and say, hey, go deal with this, this is a high priority. So there's, there's multiple levels of delegation of, of tasks there. Um, it isn't, yeah. I, I was actually highly impressed by, by the level of, um, delegation and how those things can work out. We're not gonna do that right off the bat. That isn't gonna be happening day one. And they, they actually know that. Their system is developed for you to build up. You start simple, people figure out how to use the system, and then you, you start to add those extra layers. And that's one of the things I was very impressed with with their demo, is that you start simple as an organization. They don't expect you to be high-end users right on day one. You start simple, and then you start adding those layers of delegation and pushing out, pushing out tasks to people. We don't, you know, we don't have to be experts on day one. And, and their, their, their system is, is built to, I, I don't know what the right word is, but to help the organization learn the system and grow over time. That's one of the, that's one of the things that they learn the system and grow over time. That's one of the, that's one of the things that they really push is their, is their system. You know, we start out small, we get familiar with the system, and then over time, we start building and adding layers to these things, you know, we don't, you know, we, we're, we're not gonna expect the, the administrative side or the public work side to be fully integrated on day one, or after six months, or after a year, but we can, we can grow. The system is designed to kind of naturally grow with us over time, if that makes sense. Um, and that's one of the things I was extremely impressed with, with their, with their demo. You know, that's, that's kinda key. They're, they're, they're geared towards helping organizations learn the system and build over, over time, so. If that, if that makes sense.
Go ahead, Dale.
I'd like to encourage you, Mr. Mayor, to, let's see if we can kind of find out where council's at on this. I'm, I, I think we should move forward with the, now, Ben was saying they only do them by groups of four, the users. Is that your understanding, Josette?
Yes, uh, well, no, because the way they price it for the enterprise, that's their typical model, but in working with Nate and telling him, you know, he's, he asked me today, do you need one added? Well, we were already getting four, so, him saying, do we need one added, makes me think we can have an odd number if that's what you guys want.
Okay.
But their, their protocol is normally packs of four.
But if we were to, all our public work staffing were to have a login, then we'd need eight.
If Mitch and Tim are included, then it's eight.
Yeah, I'm trying to think why we, I'm trying to think why we wouldn't include them, because they're gonna have just as much stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, so, yeah, I, I, I'm in favor of.
I like it because I get that it's an extra twelve sixty-four to have Mitch and Tim separately. But remember, the cool aspect of this program was, you could push forward, repeat calendar events. So when Mitch marks down that he's cleaned the gutters at City Hall, I can say, okay, and it's six, in the spring, you're gonna do it, and then in the fall again, you're gonna do it. And those items would easily build the calendar of the city activity, which has really been a missing thing. It's kind of like, we know most of what we've got to do each year, but it's not on some master calendar. And in this way, every department could be on one system that's pushing it up.
So, a, and that's really the selling point with me, because when I was talking to Ben today, if we don't push this out for every user, it's gonna cause more workload back in the admin staff on the backend. That's the last thing we need to be doing. We, the whole idea of this program is to free up time in our admin staff. Uh, because we all know we have lots of projects pushing, um, you know, we don't need to, we don't need to be causing a burden for them, it's gonna slow us down, so. I, I think it's just a wise move to, to do the, all our users and, uh, like I said, you know, just, you know, if it's around ten grand, it's a basically a buck on one of the, either on water or sewer, you know, I mean, and I know it's gonna be spread out, so it's even less impact. I think we can absorb this, I mean, it's all right that it's, we have the capability of picking this up without impacting the general fund budget severely. That, then I would be concerned.
Okay, uh, Stephanie, do you need a motion to proceed with Dude Solutions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to have staff proceed to, um, um, hire Dude Solutions with the eight users for a total of ten thousand one hundred and twelve dollars annually? Um, is that enough for a motion?
Yes, I think it.
Go ahead, Dale.
Oh, yeah, I'll make that motion that we move ahead with the Dude Solutions contract and contract for eight users. What an amount will be, so, ten thousand something, so.
It's ten thousand one hundred and twelve, I think Josette said.
Yeah, I don't wanna narrow it down to the exact price, but it's gotta be less than eleven grand, let's put it that way.
Okay, is there a, a second to that motion?
Councilor Norman will second that.
Councilor Norman second that motion. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Councilor what?
Aye.
Councilor Norman.
Aye.
Councilor Allen.
Aye, but Josette might wanna look at their reviews online.
What?
Some of the reviews aren't really, um, heartwarming, put it to say. I know, they might have several different businesses, but scam comes up, fraud, so you might wanna look at their online reviews if you haven't.
Might be competitors.
Motion carried, and thank you, Ben, for your contribution, not only for this evening, but, uh, all your past work for this. Thank you, Ben. Moving on to D, staff report wage study drug testing discussion that we had in our last October eleventh meeting.
So you guys had asked me to bring in a agenda item with this title. I'm not sure what you were planning to do. Um, if it was set a date or talk about, I don't know, I just put it on the agenda.
Do we have a drug testing protocol if somebody has an accident?
Yes, let me, our insurance would require that.
Okay.
Um, currently, there isn't a policy outside of it being in an accident capacity in the handbook.
But the insurance would require it?
Yeah, so it's.
So it's something we need to probably incorporate into the handbook?
No, I believe it's in the handbook for just that instance, but no other, is what I'm saying. I'm trying to pull up my handbook right now.
Because I envision if we were, well, I suppose we'd get a boilerplate from somebody else that has this in place if we were to do randoms. Uh, we'd have to see, I mean, you know, at our work, there's, you know, the nurse did the, you know, somebody certified to do the testing, you know, there's gotta be all those procedures, then we'd have to have a staff person, or we'd have to hire, you know, somebody at the clinic or to do this.
So I didn't know, you guys had put it on here as like, you wanted to set an agenda or a work session for this discussion? Or tell staff what to get information-wise and bring back to you, because all of those are unknowns until I know kind of where you're going. Right?
Part of this was the, was the, uh, wage, um, revamping, and we talked about incorporating drug testing to get the best people possible, and probably save on our insurance rates. So that should probably be looked at if we went to a pre-employment with a random once a year or whatever, that what that would do for your liability rates, which I think there should be some savings there. And, uh, the staff was, we were talking, at one point had talked about what kind of a, um, study that we wanted, if we wanted to just go out to towns our size and ask around, or if you wanted to hire a, uh, firm to come back with some information. So I think those were some of the things that came up.
No, I know, I just didn't know it, moment in time for you guys to actually get in the deep of it? Were you putting this on the agenda so you could schedule a work session and have staff come back with some information? I'm not following, are we having, where, where are we going?
I, I think you're correct, Josette. I think we're, we're just talking about it and, and bringing it up again on the, tonight's agenda to exactly do that, set up a work session for the future. I don't think we wanna get into the weeds about it tonight, um.
Because I could come back at your work session with information on, is there savings in the insurance? How legally we would kind of start this program that hasn't existed before with the current, there's gotta be, I'm thinking there's gotta be some steps we have to take with notifying current staff that this is the policy. Do you know what I mean? There's gotta be some steps I don't know about. So I'd like to look into that if we're seriously considering adding this, um, into our handbook, um, and bring you guys back kind of like what all that looks like. Do they, I don't know.
Yeah, go ahead, Dale.
So, I guess, was this on our priority list?
I, I have no idea. I, it came up in, it came up in my review and it came up in your priorities as being mentioned, so I don't know where it came from exactly.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, sounds like you're gonna have to invest quite a bit of, you know, well, I don't know how much time you think it's gonna take to be invested in this. I mean, we, we all have to be conscious of, of the workload. Um, you know, we're, we're already kind of said, we're, we're, we're kind of cutting off on projects, and to be adding more workload, I guess, you know, this is gonna have to, you know, if we really want this, this is jumping up on the priority list, we're, we're doing one of them jump-arounds there, so. Um, I don't, to me, job, y- you understand the job performance of what, of what our personnel's doing. Uh, we're a small knit workforce here. I don't think anybody that's a heavy drug user is, you know, you, we would probably see that, it would impact their performance, so. Um, my only concern is, you know, around the accidents, I know that is critical. If, and, and you can, you know, if somebody starts to have a problem, that's usually what happens, they have an accident and you pick it up there, but, uh, that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm a little concerned of tasking our city administrator with rolling out a whole policy change here when we've got all this money coming in and all these projects rushing down off the hill ladder.
Yeah, so you guys, so, I gotta interrupt you, Dale, because I just pulled up the newest handbook we adopted. We do reserve the right to test people that are given a conditional offer of employment in a safety-sensitive position. But we do have that in our handbook, so someone going into public works, running equipment, we could do that right now. I need to double-check with Ruben what other documents we'd need to have in the re-employment packet that we give to everybody about this is the insurance offering and all that, because I don't have that document. Um, but we can also test on on-the-job accidents and, um, we can test if we're, if we suspect them abusing. That's a tricky sword, because there's a whole bunch of documentation you have to do before you can say you suspect. Um, and we've had that issue with a couple in the past who just ended up leaving on their own accord as we were trying to gather that, uh, documentation. So there isn't a, I mean, there is an element of this already in the handbook, we don't have all the pieces to implement it at this time. But if that's the way council is going, we could work towards implementation, getting the necessary documents we need.
So it sounds like we're halfway there, so.
So I could bring, I mean, if you guys wanna set a date to discuss this further, I could go through and, and get that documentation figured out, have Ruben maybe give us a memo of the suspecting and what, what the elements would need to be before we could test someone we suspect or whatever, I mean, have a little more in-depth, maybe in-person discussion where we're not breaking out and hard to hear and see it all in front of us.
Yeah, Josette, I think the.
Yeah, we could bring that. Go ahead, JR.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Um, my computer said shut off the camera, that's why I kept losing you, but I think on that priority list, and when we were starting talking about it, was the wage study, and we, right, we were talking about what it's gonna take to retain and have these young folks know where they're gonna be in maybe ten or fifteen years to stay with the city. And that's when the subject come up with, you know, if we're gonna pay good and give them these steps, that they know where they're gonna be, we're gonna expect drug-free folks, you know? And they're gonna know they're working with drug-free or alcohol, uh, not alcohol impaired people at work, so. Um, and plus, I just thought it was part of the same conversation.
Yeah. I'm not aware, is there an alcohol test?
Well, when they test for drugs and alcohol, they test for the alcohol content in your blood at the time of test. Because you're typically at work when you go in the morning to take a drug test, and if it's over a certain limit, you are going to drug rehab.
But is it a blood test?
Even though it's legal, but you're over a certain limit in your blood, you're under the influence at work. Just like if you were driving a school bus.
But, but you, it's a blood test?
No. It's a breathalyzer test.
No, it's a urine test, it kind of shows up in the urine.
Oh, okay.
Dale, Dale's taking a breathalyzer test in the morning, too, they can.
Yeah, that's what our work did, was breathalyzer, and then they did, uh, cheek swabs. Yeah.
What's a cheek swab tell you?
Drugs. Yes, real quick and easy.
It, it, okay, I'm new to all this, I've never heard of any of this, I mean.
Yeah, we used to, used to do the pee test, and then they went to the, to the swab, so I think they could even get even better with the swabs.
Okay.
And it's less.
Usually it's a third-party company, Josette, that just pulls a name out at random, sends it to you, so.
And then you go somewhere, JR, or they came to you, they come to you?
No, you.
We go to like Concordia, uh, places, they're all over Portland, they're like in Hillsborough, Forts Grove, Portland, you just go to the closest one, and you've got twenty-four hours typically, once your supervisor. You just go to the closest one and you've got 24 hours typically, once your supervisor notifies you to go get the test. Uh, our program runs through the union and then they pay in, everybody pays into it, I don't know, a few cents an hour or something, but so typically I would get a check for $50 for to go do it, you know, once you pass.
Paid for the time you're doing it as well?
Yeah, some programs like ours that pays you for the time that they favor it's going to take you to go do it, you know, they, so they give you I think we get a check for $50 upon, uh, passing it or taking it or something, so.
I could, I could, I could, Josette, because I'm, I'm, I could just give you a lot of information for you, so you can bring back to us. We use a private contractor at the Bus Farm, so I could give you all that information, Josette, and you could bring it back to the, to us.
Okay. So do you guys want to set a date or or have us bring it back to you next meeting to set a date or?
Yeah, why don't you bring us back more information and we can go from there.
So you want to discuss it at a council meeting on Zoom or you want to set a work session in person to discuss it?
Well, we're kind of busy for
I know.
Almost November, so I don't know if we have time in November to do it, but.
Well, it'd be best that you gather all your information and be prepared to bring something to council and then we could do the workshop and then come back to council to adopt or whatever.
Okay.
It might take you a bit with Ruben going back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay, ready to move on to business from the departments? Everyone read the finance, first quarter finance report, 2021, 2022. Any questions?
Just good to see we end up with more cash on hand than our admin budget. So we were, it looked like 111,000 to the plus side.
Yeah.
It gives us some breathing room. It looked like water, water, boy, we, we cut it really close there, just slightly above, so two or 20 some thousand, but which is good. Keeps us on.
Looking pretty good, aren't we?
Yeah.
Except for cemetery, huh?
Yeah.
It says we bought a new flagpole. I thought we were just cleaning up the one we took down.
Um, we didn't replace the flagpole. We cleaned it up and epoxy coated it.
Did it say in here we bought a new flagpole or something?
No, Angie, it's Angie's report and she put we replaced, but there was no replacement.
Right.
So what was wrong with cemetery? It looked like, uh, we got more revenue than expected. payroll, looks like it's on track. Expenses are below forecast, so look good to me.
Well, cemetery fund expenses are almost triple compared to quarter one last year. That's the part I read. We replaced the flagpole and poured concrete for the new pole. There is also a few markers purchased for the niche wall. I'll be bringing supplemental budget for approval after the second quarter.
Right, but we've only expensed 14% of the expense and 25% of the year's gone by.
Yeah.
So while it's different than the previous year, it's still 11% under what a quarter of the year's spending should look like.
Yeah, well, I guess I was confused by that sentence there, too.
Yeah, it just, we, we paid John Sward to pour the new base. We spent money on the new treatment of the outside of it and then some markers. That's what Angie's saying the supplemental is. A couple of the budget lines are more than we had estimated because we didn't, um, where it would be in contract services for like Sward, the contract service line item was low. So that's what the supplemental is just cleaning up within the fund, but it's not like a huge overrun or overspending of the fund. It's just line items were overspent, need to be tweaked.
Any other discussion or questions about the quarterly budget? If not.
I had one question, Mayor, sorry. Where did your grant come from in the admin cash carry forward?
Well, the budget's just a guess. And so when more property taxes come in or anything like that, then the cash carry forward is what's exactly in in the account when the year flipped. So for a more detailed breakdown, could you email that question to Angie and she can tell you? Because I don't know exactly what made up that hundred other than increase in property taxes and underspending line item. But so I don't have the specifics without going into QuickBooks and I don't, she's the QuickBook lady.
Okay, well, just curious.
Okay, we ready to move on? Move on to ordinances and resolutions. We already passed one tonight. Um, is there any correspondence? If not, we're ready for a city administrator report, which we all have tonight.
So, um, do you have any questions about it? I don't want to read it for you.
Go ahead, Josette.
Do you guys have any questions on any of the items? Or?
Have we started on the Lakeview sewer yet?
Yeah, they started doing the trenching and they were supposed to get the hole cut today, but the gentleman from the whole company changed the date on them. So they're partially worked into it, but not fully. The holes hasn't been cut in the manhole yet down at the pump station. And Don said, um, he's just one more meeting with Jeff on site and then he'll finish that easement for the upper portion of that. And he said he's made probably 33% of the movement on the topo for Louisiana.
Oh. So they're digging in and laying pipe down there on the low?
No, today was Robert just working on cutting the trench. They didn't want to have, they're not going to lay pipe until that hole is cut. They can fully put it in the hole and go back from the manhole.
Okay, yeah, I'm concerned. We're going to get all this rain. It's going to foul us. Looks like November, first part of November is going to be dry, though. So the damage on City Hall, we got any estimates yet?
They don't have a price estimate. Um, Martin Glass out of Cornelius came. I contacted a couple other glass firms and Martin was the one that could come out. Um, for the most part, other than two windows, we believe we can pop the middle panel out because the frames weren't damaged. And Milgard has almost an identical frame to go in there with the with the grating. Um, the thing that Brad from Martin Glass didn't know is there is a run on flat glass, clear glass. And now they want to use the tinted a teeny big green. Um, ours would look like a patchwork quilt if we did that. So he's going to look at what the supply is for the flat clear glass. And if it's not going to be available, um, then we'll have to relook at, do we replace some windows? Even if it's still whole, to make the windows match, because it will look weird if it's just green and clear through the, even he thought it would look weird. Um, so he was going back to his office to kind of research that and he'll be sending me an estimate soon. We know that the man door in going into the police department, we're just going to replace with a steel door. Um, the windows have always bugged the police. The windows into that garage is always bugged the police for security. And then we're going to propose that the one window closest to the man door um, just be cut, just be eliminated. It's basically their patrol room and on the inside of that room, that window is sheet rocked over.
Oh.
For a number of years, it's had sheet rock in front of it. Um, and so we're proposing to just eliminate that window. So there will be some costs in patching in and fixing the hardy plank there. So it doesn't just look like hardy plank cut to a window. We'll have to go back some feet and patchwork it in so that the pieces all meld together and it doesn't look like, hey, you just replaced a window spot with a hole and take four foot hardy plank. Um, but yeah, Martin Glass should have their estimate to me this, by the end of this week, hopefully. And I did go and testify at the grand jury. The day after it happened, the DA wanted us, subpoenaed us to be there um, to give estimates and show pictures of the damage and the costs, ballpark costs. What we were guessing is if we had to replace the windows, it was going to be with labor about $2,000 a window. So there's potentially with the doors damage and the window damage, there was potentially about $18,000 as a first guest estimate of what the damage was.
Any other questions for Josette?
Charlie, the meeting.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you for the night of the vandalism, you and Casey and Mitch and went down there and fortunately we had plywood and you sealed that up in a very timely manner and didn't get any sleep that night. And thank you so much for your efforts and a good call in painting those um, the next day. And thank you to your staff and crew for doing that. And it looks a lot less noticeable, so good job. Any other discussions or questions for Josette? Okay, I guess we're ready to move on. Items from the mayor and counselors. Um, just remind everyone on the town hall meeting on the 23rd, this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Spencer Park, we're going to have coffee and donuts for all those in attendance and um, I've contacted the, uh, the school district and they're putting up flyers in their school. Um, I called Larry Steele to see if he can participate and, um, he might be able to come. Um, we purchased, or JR purchased, uh, three basketballs to be raffled off. Um, thank you, JR, for doing that. And and, um, we're going to get some, um, I think, Winchell Donuts and Josette's going to take care of that and coffee. And, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to uh, put a positive spin and especially enlighten what happened to City Hall and um, I'm sure that those people that attend are going to be the stakeholders in the future and the ones that are going to really help us, um, with this problem we have. Um, so I, I'm, it's going to be, the atmosphere is going to try to be a little bit more encouraging and, um, just, uh, giving a shout out to those, those people that are concerned and, um, just saying thank you for showing up and, um, open to suggestions and so I hope, um, you all can make it if, if you can and hope we have a good turnout. So that's going to be on Saturday. Rain or shine, looks like rain.
Yeah.
So Rick, I did, I was able to take 585 half-sheet flyers that I printed to the school. So each kid should be getting that in their backpack.
Very good. Thank you, Josette.
Are you going to hit Facebook with it again a couple times this week or?
Yeah, so we're going to put it on the city's page and then Rick's going to share it again with a little post.
We need to really promote this.
Yeah.
To get our citizens involved. Uh, on a side note to that, I won't name names, but, uh, one of the school teachers up to the school, we were talking about this and and this person actually had a class that they could have, have that discussion. And, uh, they were reporting back that, yeah, actually a lot of the kids are kind of mad about the vandalism going on down there and, and, uh, you know, just, you know, the discussion kind of evolved into, you know, you got to be part of this solution, you know? You got to help the city out here a little and, and, uh, these people doing these things are going to end up harming your access. You know, potentially to having a place to play and restrooms to use. So, um, there, I think there was some good feedback. And, uh, it sounds like they weren't too bashful about pointing fingers in the class. So I think there was a few people embarrassed, so. Um, I'd like to commend Donald for taking his equipment, his cat and his time down at the lake. He, uh, straightened up the, the area where we're going to put the gravel in. And I think, Donald, if you're in concurrence, uh, we're probably ready for that rock.
I believe we're ready for it, too, if it's good enough for everybody else.
See Josette making a note, so. And tomorrow, uh, the homeschool kids are going to have salmon viewing and talk down on the backside of the lake. Uh, Smokeyzer is going to be giving the talk, so. They said they wanted an expert, but I don't know who that would be, but so anyhow. And I went down there on Sunday and actually made it a little safer. There's that trail that exists just past the pump to the east. And it's kind of steep and slick, so I cut some steps in and stuff in there, dressed it up a little. So hopefully it all works out. It's going to be about, I think it's one o'clock tomorrow. So you see a bunch of cars down there.
Thank you, Dale.
Hopefully there's fish. They're spinning out quick.
Speaking of the school, Sunday at noon, I was down walking the pup and there's three boys with the pads, football pads smashing into the portable restrooms, one after another. And then one of them goes in there for a minute and I'm watching from quite a ways away. And then I start walking toward and then they come out of the restroom, then they saw me and beat feet across the track and snuck in behind your place or whatever. Then I went over there and there's a huge mess, paper towels and junk all over the ground, ripped, ripped open the sanitizer thing. It was gone. All the toilet paper stuffed in the urinal, just made a big mess. I got a good look at one of them. The other one had hoodies on, but they were young, 11, 12 years old, probably. Then they came up in front of your dad's house and I happened to be walking by it and they saw me and took off running again toward the trailer park. So I'm going to have to let the school know, I guess, to maybe look at their camera about noon on Sunday. Though it's still going on out there, unfortunately, just packs of young boys wandering around.
Thank you, JR. Anybody else?
I have one thing.
Okay, Steph.
So I wanted to formally apologize to Counselor Allen. I heard from one of the people who were on the citizen panel and I spoke incorrectly. They did come to the meeting with the candidates ranked. So I wanted to apologize for that. I was incorrect.
I couldn't quite hear you, but don't worry about it.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I just wanted to give an update on the, on the carving down at Spencer Park. It's all been completed. Marvin was in town today and he, he got paid and he was very happy and we're all happy. And I've heard nothing but good things about it and I'm really pleased the way it turned out. And, and I look forward to the line being attached to the end of the bamboo fold over to the fish. And, and we could get him hooked up here someday, so. Thanks for all your support with that project. It was good to get it done.
Thank you, Mayor. I think with a drive to push that forward, we'd still be talking about it for another year or two and it'd be too late. So it is appreciated that you have a way of getting things done.
Well.
One way or another.
I enjoy it. I really enjoy working with Marvin too. He's a good guy. And I, I really think the community is going to take care of it, so I have good feelings about it, so.
Maybe we can send him a thank you letter or something. We'll sign it or something. I think he worked pretty hard on it for, I think he got himself in a little over his head on that one.
Yeah, but he stuck with it. So, well, I don't have anything else. Does anyone else? We could move on to action item summary then.
Okay, so we have the staffs moving forward with the council vacancy new plan, round two. And so Stephanie will be working on posting that, getting that in the paper for any interested people and then doing all the notifications and collecting of documents. We'll notify, formally have Steve come in, start on the planning commission. We're moving forward with the smoke testing report to do as you guys identified. I'm not going to go through all of it. It's recorded and on the tape and will be in your minutes. And then we'll move forward with the due solutions contract. And then Steph will start kind of gathering the documents and stuff and let you know when we're ready to have the wage study slash drug testing discussion workshop. And that's it.
I did have one omission the other last council when I thanked people down there at the fish thing. I failed to mention Sailor Mitchell there. She, she was there and did a great job with the kids for quite a bit. So I wanted to acknowledge her also.
I'll let her know.
And also to remind the council on this coming Monday, the 25th, we have a workshop at 6:30.
In person.
And mark that on your calendar. I think, well, Stephanie, I have information about the agenda on, probably on Wednesday for that, for that meeting. So just to remind everyone of that.
I'll send the agenda out and it will also be on go-to meeting for those who would like to attend virtually.
In person in City Hall, right?
Yes, City Council will be in person, but anyone who wishes to attend can attend virtually through go-to meeting. They're uncomfortable being here.
Okay, sounds good.
What was this one on? I'm sorry, I forgot. I lost my phone, so I don't have it in my calendar now.
It's for the police workshop. Police.
Oh, that's right, 25th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that on Monday? Oh, I knew about the 25th. I just didn't put it together with Monday, sorry.
Yep. Wake from tonight, JR, 6:30. Okay, thanks for everyone attending tonight. I'll adjourn this meeting and it's 10:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Night, thank you.